Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
He was looking me down on this end of the table with Retail Strategies, he's our partner in Retail Search. And we've been talking back in both time, the last few days considering our contract with them is up. We're going to talk about our membership contract today and we're going to talk about Jax today. Have a discussion with them concerning Jax and their incentive programs that they're asking for. Appreciate you men coming today. We're one short on our council today. He's working, could not get off this afternoon. But the rest of us are here and anxious to hear your presentation. And Scott, we'll just let you introduce the folks that came with you and get started.
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon. I know with interest of the heat here, we'll try to be as brief as possible and get to the items we want to hit today. But I want to first thank you all for your time this afternoon. We're thrilled to be here. Thrilled to be in the prettiest city hall in the state, so it's always great to be at city hall.
We'll get to some points.
There you go. We've probably been here, probably visited the market four or five times in the last year. And rounded up year one of our three-year partnership with the city. So I wanted to use this opportunity to walk through some of the items that we've been involved in, the activity on our end. We'll keep some things somewhat generic as far as names of retailers, some we can talk about. Some will kind of keep close to the vest for confidentiality purposes. But last summer, about July, we entered into a partnership with City of Hamilton. We executed a three-year partnership with the city. And that involves our team running what we call a retail market analysis. We conduct a real estate assessment of the market, what we call our boots-on-the-ground tour. And then we create what we call our retail recruitment plan. And I know the mayor and Tammy have seen that and I want to share tidbits of some of the other council members because I'm not sure that every council member has seen some of that presentation. And it's an hour-long presentation. We're not by any means going to go through all of it. But wanted you guys to be aware of some of the reports that we run, how we decipher it, and how we kind of really translate that into the retail world. The value we bring our clients is the relationships we have with national retailers. We're an extension of the city, so we like to perceive ourselves as an economic development office of the city. But our goal is retail. I mean, that's the world we live and play in every day. We're not involved in industrial or office real estate. We are retail guys through and through. So the first, well, a couple of things I want to address today, as the mayor pointed out. First, we want to kind of recap our year. What's been done, who are we talking to, what's kind of pending? So that's kind of the first point. As the mayor mentioned, our second installment is due. And so we want to give a recap of our efforts to ensure you guys that our partnership is strong. Secondly, a major point that we want to talk about is Jax. And I think most of you guys know Jax has shown interest in this market. We did successfully recruit them to Hamilton and they have asked for incentives on a partnership with the city in order to build their location here in town. So we'll get into the details of that, why they're needed, what that looks like, and options that the city have. We're not here representing Jax. We're here as a partner to the city. So anytime a retailer developer comes in and asks for incentives, we're here to protect the interests of the city. And we look at that deal as, you know, what are the financial implications to our client, the city? And that's how we're going to kind of review this Jax deal, so we'll get into that here in a moment. Again, I'm Scott Von Kaden. I'm COO of Retail Strategies. Jeff Sommer is portfolio director. He manages our clients here in Alabama. John Jackson is our retail recruiter, so he and his team are actively reaching out to these retailers that we're talking to, setting meetings at conferences. And William Turnley, lastly, also our portfolio director as well. So I think every, I know all of us have been here and this is William's first visit to the market. And Joe Strauss is another crucial member of our team. We thought five might be a crowd, so we capped it at four. There's only four seats in the car anyway, so we figured one car would do it. So I'm gonna keep things high level, definitely want an open dialogue. Feel free to ask questions. If you guys remember on our early conversations, we have a process and a formula. And when given the amount of time, we've proven to be successful in almost all of our partnerships with cities throughout the region. So there's a reason we asked for a three-year partnership. The life cycle of a single real estate deal can be 14 to 36 months. So we never come in asking for a single year because we know if we're measuring the year, we're going to fail every time. A deal in itself doesn't happen. We've been very fortunate to where we've had a couple of deals pop up, actually early on in our engagement here with Hamilton. And that's a little bit of what we'll talk about. But looking at the recruitment plan and hope you guys can see that okay. These are some of the four main reasons cities are bringing us aboard. They want to boost the tax revenue, create jobs, bring in value to the community, quality of life, and jobs as well. A lot of people, yeah, if y'all need it, mayor, if you can cut the lights off. Can everybody see that okay? I'm sorry? No, no, I'll tap it out. So again, this is what we're looking at. This is long-term, some of the main value points that we believe we can bring. This is a recruitment ladder. A lot of these, excuse me, brands are hard for you to see. But what we're saying here is towns don't start off getting a Target, getting a Costco. We get requests about these big retailers all the time. And as a community grows, as a population grows, and you get some of the small wins, it kind of brings that community up to the next tier and the next layer. And so this is showing, you know, different levels of retailers. Average sales figures, a Walmart could do upwards of $100 million in revenue. Average is about 68. But you know, that's kind of top level and then down to your fast food guys, those guys typically are doing somewhere around $1 million to $2 million. So what does that equate for a community like Hamilton where we're receiving 3% of the sales tax? This is actually a 2%, so you would add another percentage point. So you know, if we're able to recruit a business that's doing $1 million, that's going to equate to about $30,000 a year directly to the city's budget. So most certainly a financial decision, bringing on a company like us. It's an investment you guys make with an expected return as well. Now, on top of that, there's job creation. The more retail you bring to a community, the more enticing it is for other restaurants and retailers to come to that community as well. So that's another aspect. But as you can see, 30,000 on some of the fast food guys, a step up would be more of your full-service restaurants. Those guys will do three to $5 million on average. And again, that would equate to $150,000 to the city's budget annually. And then these are average, again, these are merely average numbers. But how many jobs on average some of these type retailers bring? So again, job creation, one of four jobs of retail. A lot of, the retail industry has changed a lot. Millennials is where a lot of these retailers are putting their marketing and advertising dollars. So that's something to note because that has been a major shift with the consumers in the last 10 years or so. Whereas the baby boomers dominated the, you know, consumer population. So a lot of the retailers are trying to figure out how to change and adapt in this changing environment. Obviously, we have online, Amazon, people are going online to buy things. So these are two factors that we're currently in the middle of right now. And I will say this, online sales consist of less than 10% of all retail sales. So you hear Amazon, 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 retail apocalypse, this and that. Still, a very small percentage of all sales are done online. Brick and mortar is still dominating. Still a lot of retailers opening their doors. So that's kind of the reality that we live and play in. This is a partnership, lock-to-arm approach. You know, we take on the responsibility of analyzing this market and practically reaching out to the retailers. But we certainly lean on our clients from time to time. And I know we have a lot of calls and emails with the mayor here. And he's been great on giving us information that we need to do our job in the best way possible. So this is kind of our core team here. Matt was really the first person, mayor, I believe you met years ago. And he's kind of our core team here and then the mayor serving as our point of contact. And then we have our supporting team. Robert and me are two owners and they review all of our boots-on-the-ground tour. Our marketing team, they create all the materials that we use at trade shows that we'll look at and so on. So 30,000-foot view, just as a reminder of our process, running the analysis, conducting real estate assessment, creating a strategic plan, and then we take that plan and we recruit. We go out and actively recruit. So it took us, it takes about 100 days. So in the first about three, three to four months of our partnership, that was information gathering, pulling in, running the reports, looking at the analysis and so on. So not, I really don't want to spend too much time on the numbers, but I did want to hit some of the reports that we run. This is how you guys probably look at Hamilton, city boundaries, you know, 67,000 people in an area. This is how a retailer is looking at your market. They don't care about the city limits. They're looking at a trade area. We have a few different trade areas represented on this map. Dot density, population to identify, you know, where the house tops are, how many people live within the area. So one of the first things we did, we ran within the market analysis, the retail analysis. Here, we're looking at a snapshot of six different trade areas, three radius rings and three drive times. So you can see kind of the population numbers, number of households, growth figures, income levels. And they're going to differ in each trade area that you're looking at. And the reason we're looking at multiple trade areas is because every retailer looks at your market differently. What McDonald's is going to want to look for is going to be different than what Walmart would look for and so on. So basically, what we're doing on the front end is gathering and running a lot of reports. So we have all the ammunition needed. So when we go out and we talk into retailers, they're going to ask us, how many people live within 10 minutes of the Walmart? How many people are within a five-mile radius of X? We have that information. We can supply it to the retailers, their tenant reps or the developers so that they can analyze this market for possibility.
Is it three-story?
Three-story?
Or just closed and about to reopen?
It's showing up on the computer.
Drag it over. There you go.
Sorry about that. Let's get back on page here. Okay, so again, we've got all that data. We've shared it with you. It's your product. You purchase it and you can use it however you may be. We use it our own way. We want that information for as many organizations, businesses here as possible. We've shared it with local hospitals. They've used some of the healthcare data that we actually have access to to help them in decisions. We've helped, we've sent it to local developers and other markets. So those are other ways outside of how we're using it that it can be used and accessed as well. I'll do my best to explain mobile map data. And this is a new technology that we really picked up shortly before we were hired here in Hamilton. Essentially, I imagine most everybody in this room has a smartphone device. And so we're always trying to prove a trade area. Again, we're not telling retailers that, you know, 6,800 people live in this town. We're trying to sell a larger area. You know, what's the distance people are traveling to go to the Walmart here in town, to go to the restaurants and so on? So that's what we're trying to sell. We can run a report and show that to a retailer, that's one thing. But we can run a mobile map report and actually show that to a retailer proving what Hamilton's true trade area is. So the way this report works is we can drop a dot using a computer or a pen per se on a specific building or site in town and we can choose a time period. Let's say January 1 of 18 to today. And within that time period, we have the ability to know how many people walked in that building due to tracking devices on all of our phones that most of us probably don't even realize are on our phones. They get there when we download apps. You have your location services on. If you download an app, you know there's terms and conditions. Pretty much scroll, scroll through and you click okay, that's fine. Well, within those terms and conditions, a lot of times, there is language saying they have the ability to track your whereabouts to a degree. I know, very Big Brother-ish, I get it, kind of freaky sounding. But from our standpoint, we, they go out and sell this data to groups like us. It helps us sell a market like Hamilton. So what we're looking at is the Walmart here from December to September, about a seven or eight time-month period. And the darker the density of these sub-block groups, the darker the color, I'm sorry, the higher the density of the people that came from those areas. So what we can do is we can roughly carve out an area and you can see we're getting Goon and Winfield and some of the surrounding communities, and that's the number that we're selling to these retailers. Okay, so this is generally speaking, a custom trade area. So when I'm talking to a restaurant, I'm saying there's about 50,000 people shopping in this area on a weekly basis. This is the number that we're using. That gets a lot of these retailers kind of over the hump. So projected, average numbers, average ages. So some of the data that we have access to, we can break a trade area up, population by race, average household size, how many households are in the area, what's the makeup of each household. Again, it's very detailed information, not always used, but is helpful at certain times. We can see how the housing units are laid out, which are occupied, which are owner-occupied, how many renters are in the area, what's the day-town population and so on. So average employee salary, I'll just kind of click through some of these. Educational attainment, very relevant with some retailers, not relevant at all with others. So again, every retailer has a different set of criteria. The gap analysis, I think we talked to a lot of you guys about this, identifying dollars leaving your area on an annual basis. So you can see food and beverage stores, which are essentially grocery, building material and garden equipment at 12 million, sporting goods hobby book and music stores at five, food service and drinking places, which are restaurants essentially. So what this means is these are the dollar amounts that are leaking outside of the municipal boundaries here in Hamilton. Not to worry, every town has leakage. It's natural. New York City has leakage. All we're trying to do is identify it, capture it, and we're never going to be able to eradicate leakage in Hamilton or anywhere else. Our goal though is to identify some of the sectors that are leaking out, whether they're going to Jasper, they're going to Tupelo, going to Birmingham to shop elsewhere because that's an opportunity lost for Hamilton. We want to capture that and hopefully whittle away those numbers by successfully recruiting retailers within some of those categories. We also run a peer analysis report that identifies peer communities throughout the region. With this, we have the ability to identify retailers that have a propensity to come to peer communities that look like Hamilton on paper but are not here. So it's a great selling point if we go to, you know, say a Zaksby's for instance, I'm using them merely as an example. And we're selling Hamilton and they say, I don't know if we're going to be successful in Hamilton. If we can show that they're in three or four of your peer communities that have similar household numbers, similar growth trajectories, similar income levels, and they're successful there, it's a good story as to why they'd be successful here. So just kind of shedding some light as to why we run all these reports. This kind of shows how we're stacking up against our peer average. And you can see, generally speaking, Hamilton has less offerings than our peer community. So reinforces the need for new business and really the opportunity here as well. So as mentioned, about 60 days in, two months into our contract, we came back up here, created our real estate assessment. This is basically a map of the existing retail landscape and then we kind of come in and look at site by site. So we're looking at sites by the interstate off I-22, in-town as well, whether it's downtown or on the main drag, essentially near Walmart. And we're collecting information on these properties, ownership, prices, are they available for sale, are they not available? Is there vacancy in shopping centers? If so, how big are they? We're asking the landlords for survey site plans and just basically gathering as much information about each property that we deem a good retail site. So again, when we're out on the market and we're talking to these expanding tenants, these are the questions that they're going to ask us right off the bat. How many people? What's the income levels? What are the traffic counts? Okay, you sold me on the market, now where's the site? And they'll say, John, I need an acre. I'm not going to pay more than $300,000. I need to have 20,000 cars in front and I need 180 feet of frontage. Those are, those, a lot of the conversations that we're having. So again, we collect all this information on the front end so that we're prepared and we have, again, the ammo to share with those guys. Again, Tiffany Kilpatrick was the portfolio director and she worked with Hibbett. Just basically talking about the timeline of a deal and we won't go into the whole quote there. So kind of whittling down three focus areas for us, restaurants, furniture, apparel and shoes. We have collectively about, I think, 65 prospects on our list. But we kind of narrow it down to three categories that are our main focus. By no means is that only what we're focusing on, but if we're going to focus on three, those are those. So this is Retail Strategies here in the middle and this is just really an icon that kind of elaborates to what we do. We've got property owners, developers, brokers, retailers and their representatives and community leaders here. So we're matchmakers. We tee up deals. We're not involved in the transactions of the deals. We're exposing Hamilton to a larger market, to retailers that most likely otherwise would not already see this market. So kind of in a nutshell, that's some of the upfront stuff that we did. We created marketing materials. Jeff, I know you've got a few copies on you. So when we go to these trade shows, we had a big show in Vegas that we sent a follow-up report where we met several retailers. And this hits kind of some of the highlights and this is actually a four-page brochure. So this is one example of a marketing packet that our team uses to help promote Hamilton out on a national platform. As a company, we go to about 18 to 20 of these shows a year across the country. I would say about five or six of them are really more relevant here to Hamilton. We'll have Atlanta coming up in October. We had a Gulf South show in New Orleans, which is a southeast regional show. There's also a show in Charlotte that we attended in February. We had some good meetings there on behalf of Hamilton. So again, you can see this is kind of a setup, our setup at one of the shows. We make huge investments in these conferences, again, to make sure that our clients are getting maximum exposure. So I believe this is actually at the Vegas show. It's a 40 by 40 booth. We have about 12 tables and we have the ability to just set meetings with our retailers and brokers working in this market and elsewhere. As far as, you know, updating, we have, you know, monthly webinar series that you guys have access and manly, Mayor Page, that is a value add, that our president actually holds and interviews. Another, another expert each month in the real estate industry, whether it's a real estate director for a national brand like Hibbett or McDonald's or Dick's Sporting Goods or a national developer and broker. We also have monthly retail trends where we share trends that we're currently seeing nationwide and how that, what that effect and the meaning is in your community as well. This is an example of our recap document that we provided following the Vegas show in May. And I know that was about an eight or nine-page document, just outlining the businesses that we met with, some of the feedback that we received from some of the retailers and so on. And then we also are promoting just information we think is helpful for our clients. The opportunity zone, you guys might be familiar with that. We actually did a whole webinar on the opportunity zones that were issued through the new tax plan that President Trump put together. And we identified all the opportunity tracks, zone tracks here in Hamilton and shared those with you guys as well as additional information on how it's useful and how people are using those opportunity zones to influence growth and development. So that is kind of outlining some of those initial points. Yeah, it's split screen. So as far as our agreement's concerned, this is just checking off a lot of the items mentioned in our original agreement. I'll sit down, so I'm going to have to scroll down through this. But again, starting off and we'll get into more details of retailers. Talking about, first thing we did is we identified multiple trade areas. We ran our analysis, reported and analyzed those reports from each geographic area. There are a couple of other reports I didn't mention, consumer and behavior analysis, which goes a little bit deeper into identifying types of products people in the Hamilton area are buying, their propensity to buy certain products. Again, that's a report that we've seen very useful for local merchants. So if you have a local hardware store, a local sporting goods store, in these reports, it actually shows the propensity of people to buy certain items, certain hardware items, certain sporting good items. And it sometimes can allow a local business owner to identify type of products they would, you know, have in inventory here in the market. So again, that's kind of a value add for some of the local merchants. I mentioned mapping and aerial imagery, the peer report, the gap analysis. Again, we did our in-market real estate analysis completed in September when we came up here and we assessed existing retail landscape as well. Identified 17 properties as good sites and collected information about those as well. Over 55 retail prospects have been identifying, have been identified, excuse me, using our reports. And we have conducted outreach to every single one of those retailers. We completed our plan in the late fall and then again, we gave, I believe we presented it in a webinar to you and Tammy if I remember correctly. I'm trying to remember who all was in that presentation. But we hit some of the highlights of that there. So just kind of talking, these are some of the names and I won't go through every single one of them. But some of the property owners that we've been talking to, working with, providing information to, or asking for information. We've had over 11 site-specific demographic and research reports that have been created to aid in the marketing of opportunities. So in some instances, we will have, so some of the more sophisticated shopping center owners will have marketing materials themselves, which is great. You know, we ask for that. It's how retailers expect to see information. There's marketing flyers, it has all kinds of information regarding either vacancies or land and so on. A lot of times though, especially in the smaller markets, that doesn't even exist. So our marketing team actually creates some of these flyers and sends them to retailers where we'll capture a site, the size of it, the price and all the information that these decision-makers are trying to make here. Again, reached out to 100% of the retailers. Feedback has been received from about 95. We've had about two or three of the names on the list that really, when we started, we're active and have become really inactive in the marketplace. So there's not a lot of activity from just about two, two or three of those names out there. So again, that's why we kind of have that 95%. And we also identified a few retailers new to the state of Alabama to add as possible tenants here. So I want to get in on some.
Maybe don't, on the recon part, we'll leave that out. It's further down. It's just further down, okay.
Well, what if I do this? Instead of, I know this is just a lot of verbiage. I will, I will just, I'll just take this out and just go through it. How about that? Does that work? Because I do, I want to talk about some of these, but I want to be careful about certain names. Jax obviously is the highest on our list of retailers that, we've got them here. Again, very rarely do we have a retailer at the table this early in the game in most of our partnerships. So thrilled about that, happy about that. We're going to talk about how we handle that and what the city wants to do as far as incentives. Want to talk about a few other things that we've been involved in. Very early on, we identified a national furniture store that was interested in this market. They have several locations around Alabama. We were excited. They had interest. We had a meeting with their team in, at the Atlanta show back in the fall. And we've also had their tenant rep to our office in Birmingham. They need about 18,000 square feet of second-generation space. So there's got to be empty space for them and it's got to be at least 18,000 square feet. So we got them connected with the property owner that owns the old Walmart. This is not a group that will build a new store. So we can't ask them to buy a piece of property and build a new store. That doesn't fit their pro forma per se. They pay frankly, cheap rent and they can't afford to build a new store. Nobody could afford to build them what they're paying rent. So connected them with the landlord. They actually went of the old Walmart. So, um, connected them with the landlord, they actually went, uh, of the old Walmart, they went back and forth. Um, trading papers on the site, uh, took it to the corporate furniture team and they ultimately decided the site's too small. Uh, we're about four thousand square feet off and they cannot concede to that. They have to have a certain amount of floor space, uh, for their furniture. Um, so that was, uh, an opportunity where we brought a retailer here to the market, had them pretty close and unfortunately lost it due to size. Uh, obviously, we've got, um, other shopping center space in town, so naturally, we went to the next shopping center. Um, former grocery store, um, I don't know if there's a, a name to the center down there in the, uh, down the hill.
The Hardee's is...
Where the Hardee's and, um, was, was there the name?
The daycare is down there.
Yeah.
I forgot what my name is.
Old Town and Country.
Yeah. Old Town and Country.
The grocery store was one Detsu that was there.
Right, right. Um, so, we, we know that, um, the leasing agent, her name is Louise Jennings. Um, she's at a private, and we've worked with her in other markets, met her actually in Charlotte at that show, uh, to talk about the possibility of getting this retailer into her center. Um, she has tried to convince the landlord, as I understand, to make some improvements to the center, you know, repave the parking lot, upgrade lighting, and I think with very little success. Um, so our furniture guys came up here, took a look at it and basically said, we're still, we wanna be in the market, but in order to go into that center, we're gonna need either some improvements and/or another tenant to join us.
National brand.
Another national branded retailer to join us. Um, and so that's kind of what, where that situation, it really still is today. We're having conversations with a national, another national branded retailer that sells more general merchandise and we're trying to bring those two groups together in order to facilitate a deal there.
We also, uh, in Vegas, put the property in front of a investment group out of Nashville, Tennessee, to see if they'd wanna buy it. Uh, that's something in our industry where, uh, real estate investment firms will buy centers like that. They have relationships similar to us, try to put in some national tenants in there, kinda bring it up a little bit and then put it back on the market. So, they've reviewed it, uh, they've passed on it at this time, but we're, again, we're still talking with the, uh, furniture user, so...
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's a good problem to have, we've got someone that really wants to be here, we just, we gotta find a home for him, is, is what we're dealing with, so, um...
By the way, this is Scott Hunt, our city attorney that walked in.
Okay, we spoke on the phone, he's Scott.
Yeah.
Um...
These are, these guys are all with retail strategies, Scott.
Trying to think of these, some of these others that we wanted to. I'll just kinda, there's, there's been a couple of the restaurants, generally speaking, that have been in, interested. Um, some are trying to find the right site. Um, we've been trying to push some interest out on, uh, the interstate, um, what's that?
You want me to talk about, uh, there's a, there's a national, uh, I guess you'd say breakfast user that, uh, we, we kinda realized wasn't in the market, um, all y'all are familiar with it, but, you know, they, they corporately had to turn it down due to the fact that they need, uh, their, their two locations need to be twenty-five miles or closer together. So, their closest location right now is forty-eight miles from Hamilton, from the interstate exit. And that's because of distribution, uh, their trucks, they, they can't run that far without having another stop in between. So, you know, we're still monitoring that and if, if we, if we see one being built, uh, closer by, then obviously, we'll go right after them. But, um, we identified them and then there's, you know, burger chains, uh, that we can't mention the name, but that we, that we met with out in Vegas, uh, have put sites in front of them and they use an interesting scoring technique to where you give them a specific address and it could be on this side of the highway and another address on this side of the highway and they'll score both of them and it'll give them a sales projection, um, based on this, uh, program that they have. But it could be eighty thousand dollars, you know, on the going home side of the road, which, you know, would be going north in Hamilton and it could be eighty thousand less on the, uh, headed south side of the highway. So, it, um, we're still awaiting feedback from them on the scoring, but, you know, they're, they were very interested in the market. If they do, uh, move forward, they would need a franchisee, so another thing to keep in mind, if there's any local, uh, you know, investors that y'all have in mind that would be open to franchising a, a restaurant or, um, you know, we, we would love to talk to them and hopefully put a few things in front of them.
Yeah, on that same topic, uh, talking about franchisees, that we have a national, uh, quick service restaurant, it's burgers slash sandwiches. Again, y'all would all be familiar with the name, uh, but they're interested in the market. I know Scott has engaged with, uh, this particular, uh, tenant rep since inception, early on in our engagement with y'all. Uh, but again, it's a franchise issue. So, we've been talking to the Mississippi franchise group, see if they'd be interested in coming up here to Alabama or any other North Alabama stores. But again, he likes the market, uh, we've gotta find an operator, so... Those are some positive a- actions, but again, it's finding a franchisee.
We got two truck stops coming out on the interstate.
Oh, I, that's what I was just about to mention, a couple of other things that, that, um...
We got one coming downtown.
Right, so we've got, um, right, so, uh, there's gonna be a Chevron, uh, going across street from, from, from the Walmart. Um, and that, that operator is, you know, they hope that construction will be done by December, is their plan, is the plan right now. Um, when that one is done, there, uh, is interest on opening a truck stop out on the interstate, uh, as well, which will be, uh, a tr- a, a, a four, it'll take up four acres. Um, and our sales efforts to try to get restaurants out on the interstate, a lot of the feedback we get is, we don't wanna be the lone dog, we don't wanna be the, um, the first guy out here. Um, so we're very encouraged to, when construction begins on that truck stop, it's really gonna help us sell some of those sites out on the interstate. One of the first things we noticed, um, when we came to the market is Walmart in most communities has what is referred to as a shadow city, which is essentially a strip center that's typically adjacent or very nearby near Walmart that has a lineup of a lot of the very same retailers in every market. And so, go ahead.
I, I don't mean this in a bad way now, since we've had y'all on for a year. And now, we've got three truck stops here and y'all have got nothing. Since you got on, we had nobody in mind and right now, we've got three truck stops coming into Hamilton and y'all have still not done anything for us. Now, why was it that you didn't get to these people and try to get these, instead of us? We've gone and gotten them ourselves.
We've talked to Jim Sibley several, several times.
Well...
And we've connected him with other individuals as well.
Not, we, we've, we're the ones that got Jim Sibley here.
So, I guess my question would be, of, of the three truck stops, are any of them op- currently in operating?
No, they're under, one of them's under construction and the other, the property has already been bought and will be started soon as they get through with this.
Okay.
But Sibley, I'd been talking to him since we'd been in office. I happen to know the family personally.
Sure.
And nobody had ever talked to him about coming to Hamilton, Alabama.
So, how, when did conversations start with Jim?
Back before we, two, over two years ago.
Okay, so, to, to that point, the reason I ask that is, that's how long these transactions taken. We, we spent the first a hundred days of our, um, partnership on our market research, creating a boots-on-the-ground tour, putting together our plan and we began recruitment at the beginning of two thousand eighteen, essentially, late two thousand nineteen. So, we've essentially been recruiting retail here in Hamilton for about seven to eight months. And we already have a retailer that's interested, we have two retailers that, we have three or four retailers that want to be here. So, in my mind, I feel like we've done a very good job...
One of them here wanting the hamburger place you're talking about, they've been here twice before.
Okay.
They closed up and left.
Okay.
So, uh, we're... And right now, I just want you to understand, our McDonald's just spent six hundred thousand dollars, their own money, completely redo their place. Burger King just spent three or four hundred thousand dollars to redo their place. So, we can't have these restaurants coming in here wanting us to give them a tax break and go into business against people that put their own money in it.
Sure.
Now, and I don't want it, I was in business here and it would have paid me off of somebody. In fact, I had four restaurants at one time. Somebody'd come in and give them a tax break to come in, competition against me.
Mm-hmm.
When these people went in without any, and they're concerned about it. And I don't blame them, about us giving somebody that'd already been here twice, closed up and left and coming back and wanting us to give them a tax break to come back in.
And...
And that's one of them that you've got in mind.
Our job was to get the retailers here and that, that's what I feel like we, we've done. We, we, we're not asking for incentives. I'm a, I'm a...
Well, they are.
They are, but they're not with, with us, they're not...
And how can we give them an incentive when we can't give every hamburger place that comes in here an incentive? We've got plenty of them, of those, it's, we're not gonna gain a thing for doing that. All we're gonna do is divide up the business with the people here that have paid their own dues on their own businesses and we're saying, we're gonna bring somebody else in to divide theirs up to pay for theirs to come in.
Well, I, that's just...
And what we're looking for, I think, that they'll all agree, we're looking for new stuff. Now, we started with y'all and, uh, we've gotten three truck stops coming in here and y'all haven't gotten us anything. I mean, I'm just telling you the facts, you know, everybody here knows this. And we haven't gotten a thing from y'all. And everything, now you're bringing back a hamburger place, gonna put it to us, that has already been here twice and closed up and left. And we're certainly, I'm, I don't know about the rest of them, I'm certainly not gonna give them a tax break to come back against these people that've been in here and redone just now. I'm talking about McDonald's and Burger King just now opened back up and redoing their businesses and spending as much as Jaxx would put into theirs. If we did something, give Jaxx a tax break for the years they're asking for, they wouldn't have a nickel in their business when it got through. Because their company, I understand, is building the stores and then they're letting somebody else come in and all they got to do is put the equipment and stuff in it and move in it and rent it and then, but they will get this money and that'll pay for their equipment and stuff and they wouldn't have a nickel invested.
Well, that's up to you guys, I mean...
We're not looking for something like that.
Right.
I, I had four of them at one time and old Gene paid for them working twelve and fourteen hours a day. And I'm certainly not, and every one of us have been in business here before.
Sure.
And, uh, now...
Hey, guys, we're not advocating...
Yeah.
We're, we're presenting the facts, that's our job. And we're trying to protect you guys. Because when, when Jaxx came and asked for you for money, my first question was, I'd like to see a copy of your pro forma so we can vet that out, and that's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
And so, we vetted it out and I captured exactly the dollars that they need to get the return that, that justifies them doing the store. And that's what we're here to talk about today. So, I never came in asking for incentives, our team never did.
Well, I knew that's what it's coming down to was, was the restaurants you're speaking of was here before.
Sure, I, I, we're here to present the facts.
And since we've got people here that just got through spending three hundred and six hundred thousand or more to redo their stores now, there's no way I'll ever vote, give another hamburger. We're not looking for hamburger places or something like that. We're looking for something that's gonna bring us tax money in that we're not getting now.
Sure.
And these truck stops are it. We don't, been sitting here for the last ten, fifteen years with this interstate open here and we don't have a thing here and everybody else from here in Birmingham has got something on there. And we don't have anything. By now, we've got two truck stops coming in fixing, open up out there and nobody's helped us, we've got them ourselves. And that's not good to say, but we knew some people and, except one that's coming in, we didn't know them.
And when, when are they gonna open?
Soon as they get them built, I guess. Now, the one out on the interstate, the people that are building here in town, they're, soon as they get through here, they're going out to the interstate. And so, we're, we're looking at somebody that's spending a million dollars or more here that people can't afford to do anything else for us to help and go and pay taxes and not go into competition against somebody else. As you know, out on that interstate, that's money that most of our people here don't buy. That'd be people going up down the road we're looking for.
Well, I will say this, Gene, we, we reached out to Jaxx. We did so because they're in expansion mode and they're growing. And they wanna open stores in cities in Alabama. Uh, we could have easily ignored them, I know they've been here, I understand that. Um, and I understand there are other burger chains here too.
Well, we'd be glad to have them, if they come in like the others did and pay their own way, we're not gonna put them in competition against five or six we've got here.
Sure.
That'd be kinda stupid on our part, I'd be mad if I was McDonald's man and the Burger King people, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I mean, right down the road, they come in, we tag, give them a tax break to go into competition with them, order their help and everything else.
Well, I'll say this, we've worked in a lot of communities across the country and we have seen competitions go right next door to each other. They prefer that. McDonald's wants Burger King to go next door and when Wendy's comes in, they're gonna wanna be right next door to their competition. And so, essentially, what you do is you create, you're creating a retail cluster. You go to Jasper and there's, what, twenty burger chains? But they're all doing well, they're all, they're, 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 they're growing the pie. So, we've worked in a lot of markets where it's perceived that you're bringing in competition, but in reality, the more retail, the more business you bring to an area, the larger trade area that you're pulling. More people are now coming to your community to spend their dollars here because there are more options and there's more variety here in the market. I understand that burger chain's a burger chain, but people do perceive a Hardee's burger different from a Jaxx that also has chicken, different from McDonald's and Burger King.
Yeah, but you want them to have the same, listen, when I was in restaurant business, if the city to come in and put competition in against me, I'd been ready to whip somebody's butt.
Sure.
Because I would, had to work twelve, fourteen hours a day to get mine in there and then come in and just put somebody in business with a tax break. That, we don't really, all you're doing is dividing the money still. Cause if they're gonna buy a hamburger, they're gonna buy one somewhere. They're not gonna drive from here to Duplo to get one at Jaxx or...
You don't have to give them a tax break, that's completely up to you guys.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, no, that's what they're asking for, that's for sure.
Calls have gone up over the years, I mean, that's...
Yeah, again, we're, we're not asking for incentives, we're here to present the facts.
I say, that's what Jaxx is gonna be asking for though. They've already asked, yes.
Correct.
What's that, Mike, we, something we talked about on the phone, if, if that competition level, of where do you go from maybe eating your own to expanding out and bringing in others? Like, the, the question I think Mr. Sanderson has and, and some others with some of these gas stations or whatever have had is, are we duplicating our business and we're just spreading it out between one to now two or three? Or where's that level that we start getting new dollars coming in?
Yeah, well, I, I think everybody's concerned that a piece of my pie is gonna be taken away.
Right.
And, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to grow Hamilton's pie. The same thing could be said about truck stops, with all due respect. You got three truck stops, wouldn't they be taking gas away from one another? We, potentially, but, you know, you're gonna have more car, you're gonna have more options, more cars, more people stopping on the side of their own.
Two of them are gonna be on to the same company out of Russia. The one downtown here and the one out on, first one out on the interstate is, alright, after they found out that they were coming then...
What's the other?
Then Love, that we've tried to get for years, I've talked to them before and called them and they wasn't interested, coming down. Then when they find out that we're putting truck stop out on the interstate probably, now they're coming down. So, we go, you know, that's good, as long as we don't have to...
That's a great point, it took, it took years for them to look at Hamilton. It ta- it takes years of conversations, years of brooding them, calling them, following up. So, again, we've been recruiting for eight months and we have interest from two burger chains, a, a, other sandwich chain. So, these things take time and retail is, is a long slog and a long, long conversation, so... Your point is well made, I, I, we hear what you're saying. Uh, and again, we're, we're here to advocate on your behalf and, and listen to the council and see what y'all wanna do and, and take in what you're saying, so...
Well, we, we don't wanna pay somebody else to come in here and give these people that's worked hard themselves, competition. Now, if you bring us something that we don't have, that won't be in competition, that's what we're looking for, yes.
Sure.
We'll give, I'm sure we'll all agree to give them a tax break if it's gonna be beneficial to the city of Hamilton. That's all we care about, is it gonna be, we're all pretty old, it's on this council, we've got one pretty lady here. And, but we're looking at something that's gonna be beneficial to Hamilton down the road. We've stayed here for the last twenty years and y'all can see it, got hardly anything.
Sure.
And that's what we're looking for, we'll give a tax break, a small and, uh, something that we're not going into competition with local people that's already here.
Well, I, I, I totally understand that. Um, you know, the way I see it, we, we've been recruiting for about seven or eight months and we have three or four retailers that wanna be in this market. I feel very good about that. I understand that one of them is asking for an incentives and we are not advocating one way or not, the other. Uh, we are here, and we can talk about that or if we do not need to, we won't. Um, we just wanted to recap our efforts, where we've been, what we do and the kind of exposure we're giving Hamilton that, to your point, Hamilton hasn't seen in the last twenty years. Um, a lot of the names that, that we're talking to that are interested have not looked at this market because we came out and grabbed them. And I understand three truck stops might've, might've come in and, and we're, you know, our background and expertise is national retail, um, whether it's clothing and apparel, restaurants and so on. Those are a lot of the relationships that we have. The truck stop world is a, is a kind of a different world, similar to, to the hotel. The truck stop world is a is a kind of a different world, similar to to the hotel. A lot of people like to throw hotels in as retail. Well, it's it's kind of, but it's it's not really. And so, um, you know.
Well, we have a pretty good idea that if we get the truck stops out there, we're never gonna have to pay anybody else to come out there. You know, and I know that when you get a nice truck stops out there on the road, people, motels and things are gonna come in and surround it.
And we absolutely, and we and we have talked to Jim multiple times about anticipation of that truck stop opening because we're gonna use that as ammunition to go out and try to sell some restaurants out on the interstate. That's our plan. We've got a lot of momentum right now and that's how we intend on on using it uh to benefit this city.
But when we give the taxes to those truck stops and things, we're not planning on giving to anybody else a tax to come out there then and locate. We figure we put our money into that and they need to come out there and locate on their own money. Because that's their incentive is us having that truck stop built in there for. Their business is already there. All they got to do is, but of course, you know and I know, everybody's gonna try to get something for nothing. I'd like to do that myself, but it's pretty hard to do. I'm sorry, but I just want you to know how I feel about it and how the others feel, I don't know. But that's how I feel about it. I'm not willing to put nobody in business against other people that are already here and give them a tax break to come in. So you need to look for something that we don't have.
And we and those efforts have have not gone unwarranted. Speaking of, I just mentioned the shadow centers and that's where I was going. We reached out to a lot of developers that specialize in Walmart shadow center development. What leads those deals are the interest of the retailers. Guys like Route Twenty One, guys like It's Fashion, guys like Dollar Tree. Cato, those names are always in those centers. Matt Development is a group here locally in Alabama and they have developed many Walmarts and they have developed a lot of those centers. And we have talked to them specifically about property around the Walmart here in town in order to get a development. What's going on right now is the the brands that typically associate in those type of shopping centers like Cato, like Route Twenty One, they are not in growth mode. Route Twenty One is closing locations as we speak. Cato is is pretty stagnant. Um, s- you know, generically speaking, um, It's Fashion is not opening new stores. And that, those are some of the lineups that are typically. So again, we wanna walk through some of the things that that we've worked on. And just because it's not working today doesn't mean things won't change in twelve months. Two years ago, we were, shoot, a year and a half. We were working on Route Twenty One deals all across the state of Alabama and Georgia and Tennessee. And then they just, they had to change the strategy. They pivoted and they've decided to to consolidate a handful of their stores. A lot of these guys kinda just kinda ride the wave and so they'll have their strategy changes every few months, every year and so on. So when some of those tenants open back up, um, we have the ability to try to convince them again to come to this market.
Well, I tell you another, we got the old shopping center you were speaking of down there that missed. The other administrations have messed with them for ten years. And you see, that's the worst worst part of our city right now. The asshole where I'm talking about, with all the stores closed and things. And now supposedly they're going to try to start back up there or we're gonna close them. We're not gonna, I don't think this council is gonna mess with them much longer. We're gonna have them to do something. They're gonna clean it up, sell it or do something. Now, if they wanted to get some stores down there in that. And we'd be glad to, uh, if it was something not going in competition. Cause they can certainly put stores down there and redo that cheaper than they can build a new shopping center. So that's what we'd like to see there, you know.
And that's something we've been working on.
Yes, and get new businesses down there and get that place cleaned up. It's gonna take a lot of money because it's in bad shape. I guess the parking lot's a million dollars, I don't know. I hadn't done much paving lately, but I know it's expensive now. And the building, I'm sure the buildings are leaking, some of them I know are and it, look, they're gonna all have to have work. But they have implicated some way or another that they might be going to start trying to fix that up and get some tenants in there. Now, that's one of the big things we need here in Hamilton is that that new money coming in. But we don't need to go down there and put somebody in business there for fifty cents on the dollar against somebody that had to put the full dollar up here. We need something new coming in, if you understand what I'm saying.
Sure, I get it. Well, I mean, you you'll see that a lot. Um, incentives are very prevalent nowadays. Um, and reason being is, you know, since the early two thousands, cost of construction has gone up phenomenally. And Gene, you probably know that being in the industry. The rent the retailers are paying has not gone up phenomenally. If anything, it has stayed stagnant. So when you're looking at a development pro forma and you've gotta develop a business and it's gonna cost or develop a structure, I should say, and it's gonna cost you two million dollars and your tenant's not gonna pay you more than nine, ten bucks a foot, you're losing money. And th- therefore, and we are lucky in Alabama with states like Georgia and Mississippi and a lot of the surrounding communities do not have the ability to share sales tax dollars. Um, it has saved a lot of projects in the state. You go down and look at the TJ Maxx deal in Jasper. Uh, the city issued a sales tax uh share with that developer. That deal would not have occurred one hundred percent without the city's involvement in that project. And that allowed TJ Maxx, Hobby Lobby, uh Shoe Carnival and Petco to go to Jasper, Alabama.
That's what we need down here, something like that.
Explashed, but it took a lot of, it took about two point two million dollars. And what that was, none of that was the city's money. None of it was the city's money. It was it was future monies that would be generated off the project. And all they're doing is sharing a portion of that for a limited time period. And after that time, I think in Jasper, they did it for about eight years. And once that eight years is gone, the city instead of collecting fifty percent of the tax dollars, they collect one hundred percent. So that was a huge ROI that the city didn't have to put a dollar in. All they had to agree is you guys keep about fifty percent of the tax revenue that this center creates for about seven or eight years. That closes the economic gap that that developer had and then we collect a hun- hundred percent of it. And that's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that are at City Hall in Jasper. And it's hundreds of thousands while they're splitting it fifty fifty. It doubles once that deal is gone.
And that sparks more retail around it, so.
Oh, yeah, and you don't have to give them anything. That's what I was giving around to about out there. You get the first one out there, truck stop or these others are gonna follow and they'll try to ask for something now, that's for sure.
Sure. So y'all 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 done, y'all have, uh, so y'all done one before. So you you understand how they work, the the sales tax split? Did you say you did one? Oh, I thought you said you did one for a truck stop.
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah. Yeah, we've already done that, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so you guys understand kinda. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. We wanted, we wanted to handle kind of wh- what we've done, our team. When we have four people here today, we've sent groups of four and five, about four or five times in the last eight months. Uh, so we've visited this market very often. We've attended many shows on behalf of this city. Uh, we have coordinated calls with landlords, developers and retailers. Um, I don't know how many hundreds of calls that we have uh conducted on behalf of this city. We've had a team that has created marketing materials to make, in my opinion, Hamilton look really good, to help us sell this area. And we have uh a few retailers that wanna be here. That before we came, um, frankly, I don't think a lot of them were familiar with Hamilton in the first place. So that's kinda where we are about one year in.
Try to drive up down this road, any of these roads here in town now, since this ramp, I'm gonna have to mention it, I'm not over. Since this ramp came in here and brought all these kids and them just started moving in here the last two years, these roads have got to where at times of the day, you can't get out in them. I mean, there's so many people here. We have gained so many people in the last two, three that it's, i- it's unbelievable. And when they say we got sixty eight hundred people, I think it's more up in the sev- above the seven thousands. Cause when you try to drive up the road, you'll find out there's a lot of people that have moved into Alabama. Hamilton, Alabama that are spending more money.
We're saying there's fifty thousand.
Yeah, you're talking about the shopping area, yes.
Tell me about Bevel State. What what's the latest on that?
Bevel State, we, mayor may wanna talk about that.
If you don't mind, yeah.
We've uh, we've tried to make the uh effort to to make the college solid as a viable part of the community, um, with training or capabilities. Um, and we feel like that that's really in place forever now. We were afraid our college was about to fold and uh, our task force went to Montgomery this week and um, approached some folks who'll help and we think that we did some good down there. And we actually uh delivered some information to the two-year college board on behalf of our community and the school. We think that people are listening to us.
So then I better remove that program or is that, was that another community or have a lot of that lost that?
The programs are s- are staying.
Good, well done. That's great. Congratulations.
And we we think the college might grow stronger now.
Fantastic. That only helps our our cause too, so it's good.
We've got, um, a huge effort going on to make sure the college is always there. With a broad, a broad process of folks involved.
We're certainly not, I'm certainly not against y'all, I think you know that. But I want you to, personally, where we're standing now. And we certainly want new businesses in here to get taxes in here. But we don't want the businesses that we already have, three or four of, and have to divide the pot up and give away part of the tax money to get them in here. We're just not gonna do that. I don't think. I mean, I'm, I I don't think. And we know towns are different.
Yeah, again, it's it's totally up to y'all. Um, we're here to provide the facts. I'm here to tell you how many jobs it's gonna bring, what kind of capital investments involved. Um, what kind of tax revenue it's gonna generate for the community. Um, and then you guys make a decision whether you not, whether you you think it it's it's worthwhile or not.
You don't mind sharing those facts with us, right, at this time?
Uh, sure.
And it's a good thing, obviously, that McDonald's and Burger King both put a lot of money into their buildings. Cause obviously they see the future in Hamilton and, you know, even if they heard Jax was sniffing around, that that could have, I know it probably got started before them, that could have played a part too because competition comes in, they need to up their game so they they get up to that level of a new construction Jax would bring. But, you know, it's obviously they're doing well and they wanna invest in Hamilton and spruce the stores up that have been here for ten, ten, twenty years.
They, in fact, they just got through with them. So they just now they got them all rebuilt. The McDonald's man has, I would put him up against anybody in Hamilton of giving back to the community. He's given, I I don't think there's anybody ever lived in Hamilton, Alabama, that's put more back into the community than what he has. And he has never mentioned it. Most people don't know what he's done.
If anybody deserves an incentive, it's him.
That's right.
So why are you gonna give it to somebody else?
That's exactly it. In fact, he called me today.
I wanted to, um, this is one other thing I wanna mention. We also.
I didn't wanna stop your presentation about your company, I just, you know, we got talking about the stats thing and and I thought it might be.
No, yeah, we'll we'll jump into it. This is the the last thing I I realized I forgot. We al- we've also created a website for Hamilton. This is on a national platform, so. Anyway, I'll kinda show you. This is the homepage of the website. This is a one-stop shop. So when retailers, developers, uh, whether they're truck stop operators or dev- um, shopping center developers, restaurants, whoever it may be, they can come here and find information about multiple markets. And basically, this is the information that they're looking for. So we created this website. It has links to your marketing flyer, so you can click on this and that will blow it up and you can download it and print it off as a PDF. You can see, here's an aerial map that identifies a retail landscape here in Hamilton, traffic counts, major corridors. Uh, properties are identified, the city limits uh are are outlined as well. You can see a backstop there of obviously City Hall. Then as you scroll down, we have links to um other areas here in Hamilton such as the Chamber and the City of Hamilton, so it'll allow uh those websites to drive their web traffic uh as well, identifying Hamilton's location here uh within the state. As you scroll down, a lot of those reports, again, we we've uh reviewed about twenty-three thousand variables here in Hamilton. Uh, more information than we really sometimes know what to do with. Uh, but a lot of it's here. You can access it on the website, uh, all the demographics, the peer analysis report, the mobile tracking reports, the gap analysis, trade area information, the flyer as well. And then we have links to the city's website, uh, through your local codes and codes of ordinances. So this is a one-stop shop for that type of information and we've learned um, that it is is very helpful uh for people looking for this information. You can click on here, for instance. It's a message from the mayor. We'll see if that pops up. Uh, you can request um demographics and other information. You can see there's kind of a welcome. You see that good-looking man right there? It's a welcome, welcome message. Information about schools and so on. And again, so I just wanted to mention this. This is just another um product that we've created uh for for our client here. So, alright, let's get into the topic that we've all wanted to talk about, which is Jax. If I can get, so. Alright, so here are just a few of the bullet points. Um, this is a business coming to to town. Um, again, we do believe that Jax would bring in a larger just from working in other markets, a larger uh amount of consumers to this area. Again, trying to grow the pie as opposed to taking away pieces of the pie. Um, Jax has about a hundred and fifty-five locations throughout the south. I know everybody's familiar uh to them. This is, you know, um, your sales tax is currently being collected on the property that they're proposing to open. So this makes that property a uh a tax generating uh piece of property uh in town, uh which you'll have ad valorem property tax in addition to uh sales tax, I'm sure permits and fees. And I I, we don't quantify any of that. Right now, the leakage in the area is about, uh, the restaurant leakage is about two point seven million dollars. So we know that people are leaving Hamilton uh to buy, to go to restaurants that aren't here in Hamilton. What's that?
I said, we'd be glad to have them.
Well, absolutely. So, and and frankly, the problem we see with a lot of communities is someone leaves. Let's say someone leaves uh Hamilton and goes to Jasper to get chicken or something that might may not be offered here in town. But they might go to the drugstore while they're there and they might stop by the Walmart in Jasper because it's there, it's convenient. And so that really multiplies your leakage. Because people are leaving this market uh to get goods and services that aren't offered here. And they're filling up their car in that other market, whether it's Tupelo, Jasper. And then that increases your leakage in the categories that are offered here. So another mindset is if the more business you bring, the more variety you bring, the less likelihood people are leaving and hopefully the larger geographic area you are pulling in to your market. Um, as mentioned, we've worked in a lot of communities where businesses have come in and sales have risen of all of those businesses. Because again, a larger quantity of people come into the area. But the leakage uh is two point seven. As it stands, with the projected sales volumes, they're projecting about one point seven million dollars in year one. Uh, with annual increases of about two percent a year. Um, and that's just looking at their existing stores and how they typically operate and how their sales seem to go up, up, up and up. Um, uh, so that would equate to fifty-one thousand dollars of tax governor, excuse me, revenue generated. Um, and then to ti- to year ten, uh, that would be closer to about sixty-one thousand dollars on an annual basis that would be generated uh to the city. Um, we've talked to their team to ask how many employees this would bring. They're estimating about forty-five team members total, average compensation being about nine dollars an hour. That would include six managers and an area coach as well. So going back to the job creation aspect of of retail recruitment.
Say six managers.
Six managers.
How many hours a day are they? They gonna stay open? Forty-eight hours?
I'm sure they have shifts, so I'm not really sure.
Eight-hour shifts. If they stayed open all night, that wouldn't be twenty-four.
Well, they probably don't work all seven days a week, so they probably, I I don't, I really don't know. I mean, that, this is information that I was given by them.
Yeah, that's what I figured it from them.
Um, so with uh, you know, ground up new construction, uh, another quote-unquote benefit or something to keep in mind that as new business or new construction occurs in town, it will increase the likelihood or desire for other business theoretically to come. You see a community with truck stops going up, new businesses opening, the existing businesses redeveloping their facade. It just shows activity. Um, and again, that's just something else to kinda keep in mind. Um, it does also increase leverage again to recruit additional business, uh, fashion and other. Uh, fashion and other restaurants as well, so, this is what, to be clear, Jax has proposed. And we're the messenger, and we can all talk about it and dissect it any way, any way we, we choose to. Um, they, they have a certain internal rate of return that they've gotta hit, that their corporate has to hit. If they don't hit that number, uh, either it doesn't make sense for them, or they know they can get that number in another market, so that's just, I'm just trying to get everyone in their mind, that's how they see it. They say, we can go to Winfield, or we can go to this market, and, you know, their mind is, if they're not gonna offer from here, and again, not advocating. That, that we do or don't, um, their mindset is, we can probably get it elsewhere, uh, they're also looking at total construction costs. You know, cost of acquiring the property, and again, cost of construction just makes these deals economically tough. They, um, came to me and said, we're about, I said, how, how much are you off? What's this number, and they've estimated about around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so I asked Jax, Jim, uh, Avery, uh, the president of the company for their pro forma, which is basically them lifting their skirt to us. Uh, giving us all their intimate details, and I've said, if you're gonna ask the city to lift their skirt, we're gonna ask you to lift yours. So this is gonna be a true private-public partnership, hence the word partnership, we have to be able to understand why. Incentives are needed, and we have to vet them out, and so, our company grew out of a development and brokerage firm, so we do have the ability. To look at a pro forma and vet out all the numbers, and know whether the numbers are good or not. And so we did look at it, and we sat down with, uh, our president, CEO, who vetted out the pro forma as well. Um, and, um, and they're about two and a half percentage points off from getting the IRR they need. And so, in order to get those two and a half percentage points, again, we, we arrived at about three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That number's theoretically lower than that, but if you do a tax revenue split over, say, ten years. Uh, time value of money would bring it to about three thirty, so that's how they arrived at that figure. And we did, we did, again, look at the pro forma, and financially speaking, in order for them to hit their needed returns. We agree that that number, um, is accurate, okay, does that make sense with everyone? Okay. Um, so, they had proposed. Uh, let me, let me just get to the, uh, three hundred and thirty dollar, the thirty-five dollars is what we call a viability gap. That's the, that's the amount that is theoretically preventing the sale from happening, according to Jax. It still doesn't make sense for us, economically, we won't do it, or we're not doing it unless this, this three hundred and thirty-five dollars is somewhere assumed somewhere in our pro forma. Um, so. Our goal is, how do you capture that, what does that look like? Uh, and again, these are just, these are future dollars, none of these exist, we're not giving anything away, this is just getting a portion of something. Instead of zero percent of something. Uh, there's the letter, um, from Jax, kind of laying out some of the details there, and it's addressed to me, but on behalf of the city. Um, says total investment will be two million dollars, we will employ twenty-four, forty-five team members, six managers, one area coach. Compensation of each team member on average will be nine dollars, we expect sales volumes of the new store to be one point seven million dollars. In light of extraordinary expense involved in the development, Jax Family Restaurants is requesting the city of Hamilton participate in a simple revenue sharing plan. Because Jax has a limited amount of capital to build new restaurants, and receives many requests for considerations for small markets. Incentives are helpful in the management's decision-making process regarding expansion into new markets. Jax proposes to front all such expenses and obtain reimbursement over ten years through a division of municipal tax revenue. Uh, the analysis suggests a complete project will create fifty-one thousand dollars in annual tax revenue. Which we propose a sixty-forty split with the city for ten years, and I went ahead and laid out that scenario, and there's a lot of numbers on the board. But so you guys could see what that actually looks like.
They're asking forty percent of the rev- of the tax revenue for ten years?
Sixty.
Sixty percent?
Sixty percent is the ask, yes, sir.
Boy, I'm glad they're just asking.
Uh, I went ahead and did draw up a fifty-fifty split too, and again, you guys hold the purse strings here, and this is your decision, so. You can keep it as a may, and you, if you choose to negotiate on it, you have the power to do that if you choose to at all. This is what the sales figures look like, so, this is just showing one point seven million in revenue, and then a two percent increase year over year. So when you get down here to year ten, they're doing about two million dollars in revenue, here in Jax, there, and, and, excuse me, in Hamilton, they're expecting and projecting that. At three cents, again, the city, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars is generated in year one, that's gonna increase each year with increased sales. It'll be about sixty-one thousand dollars by the tenth year. So, collective tax revenue in ten years that will be generated from them is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars from Jack on, Jax operating. So them operating, they're hitting these sales, about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is incurred of sales tax revenue to the city. Um, again, they are proposing sixty-forty, and I won't go through all these, but this is each year. What the city receive, would receive, and what Jax would receive, so you can see year one, the city was, receives twenty thousand four hundred, year two, twenty thousand eight hundred, and again, that number increases. Up to about twenty-five thousand in year ten, after that, the city keeps the entire, uh, sales tax revenue. So, uh, we're estimating, the reason we're looking at ten years, and the reason they use that number, um, is because at a sixty-forty split. The tenth year, they project they'll receive about that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, if, if you wanna look at this and said, we wanna be equal partners in this, we don't feel comfortable giving you more than we're receiving. I just laid this out as a, as an option, and you could do a ninety-ten, or zero. Um, but this is same scenario, but fifty-fifty, uh, this shows that they wouldn't get to their number until about the twelfth year. If it was fifty-fifty, naturally, then they're receiving a, a smaller amount, so, um. That's, that's kinda what we're looking at, and again, we have been asked, uh, by their group to present that, and. That's, that's why we're, that's our role, so again, not advocating one way or the other. Um, but I wanted to lay out what's involved, um, for you guys to make a decision.
If they don't do their incentive goals, they normally just go to another market and put their stores anywhere else.
As I understand it, that's how.
They left here twice, so, they let them take.
And I mean, that's, that's something to consider too.
Yeah, it is, that's exactly right.
Certainly, certainly.
Well, um, I think it's clear that, that they have goals within their company, and that they're trying to reach to, to come to a market like us, and. You know, if, if that's the only way they can come, I think we'll just have to decide what to do and live with the consequence.
Sure, and, you know, there, there could be a mindset that, um. Absolutely no incentives, or it could be a mindset that three hundred thousand's more than we're willing to do. Um, and again, you have the ability to, to say, we, we rather cap that number at X. And maybe there's another number that the city's comfortable with, maybe there's no number that the city's comfortable with, but, you know, you theoretically have the ability to negotiate. Now, I'm not saying that, I don't know what they'll say, they could say it's this or nothing, um, and what they're telling us is, we need this. This incentive to make this an economically viable deal for us to build a store, that's how it's presented to us, and we're.
And they're basing it on numbers of people that trade in the northern.
Their sales projections, yes, sir, so due to the size of the market, they are projecting about one point seven million in annual sales. In a, in a larger market like Birmingham, they'd probably be, you know, north of two million dollars.
Well, we'd be glad to have them, if they wanna come on their own, like McDonald's is doing down there.
Sure.
They just spent over six hundred thousand dollars redoing theirs, and I, I, I couldn't see anybody giving somebody. Money to come into competition with somebody that's paying their own way.
You know, something I, I just thought of that we, we could look at, um. We'll look to see if this parcel's in the opportunity zone for what that's worth, and again, we provided you guys a map of the parcels here. In Hamilton that fall within the opportunity zone, and that is another tool available to help mitigate the risk and expense on the investor's side. Um, that could maybe lead to, to helping this out, literally just thought about this, uh, that, this one.
I'd sure like to see them come.
Oh, I think you put, okay, that's fine. Did y'all look at the map, mayor, that we sent, um, and it's on Basecamp.
The map, the trade area or the map?
The map of the opportunity zones.
I think I've seen it, but I don't.
Okay.
Well, not every community had it either.
I, I, I saw something loaded, a, a file, I, I don't know.
I remember the map that had the names of the existing businesses that you did.
Yeah, right click, no, come back up. No, this is a, a map, um, here we go, we might be able to pull it up now.
Available for sales.
No, it's, it's the census tracts that have been deemed opportunity zones by the ta- new tax law, which would be some more incentives. For capital gains for developers to do business within that area, I wanna double check and see if there is one here, I, I wish I knew the top of my head, but.
You see, we got bills, we got to pay too, you know, we've got, uh, a new wrecked building over here going up, it's gonna cost about two million dollars, and we don't have any money yet. Pay for that, we got other things coming up, we got to pay for, and I think we need to keep all the tax money, we get.
I'm looking in there, keep going.
But now, anyway, mayor, what do you think?
I'm just, I'm listening right now.
Do you know how many bills we got coming up? We're not, we're not dead free.
I'm, I'm well aware, we're dead.
I don't believe in giving away the tax money when we needed to pay our bills. We're down to, we're actually, down to close quarters.
There you go, there's one.
Is it the dark one?
The darker shade, yeah.
That's on the south side.
That's in town, keep going, so.
No, but it's on the right side of two seventy-eight.
It's on the boat.
Huh?
It is on the west side.
This is, this is main, main downtown, this is two seventy-eight.
Right, but we're.
That's the interstate exists.
Where, where's, where's the site?
This is like warm.
Oh, okay, I'll see it was further north.
Zoom in right here.
Well, I, I guess one mindset, I mean, again, we're, we're looking at this from a financial perspective. If they come with or without the incentives, the city is gonna generate more tax revenue theoretically. I mean, we already know it's gonna be about, if you do the incentives, about twenty, twenty thousand dollars a year, starting off to increase, and then. When that's over, uh, that, that will more than double, but.
What's gonna happen to the other Hamburg places?
I'm not even know.
They increase?
No, sir, I bet you they'll increase, I've seen it many, many markets.
It's what we, what we see, yeah, usually happens. It's, it's, it's counterintuitive, but.
They can say it out like these other people don't, let somebody else come in then, and they're great spares, couldn't.
Well, same with the truck stops, I bet you, uh, we're gonna have three truck stops, um, and. Um, Mr. Sibley sees that, you know, there's opportunity for that here, and he alone is investing potentially to himself. So you could theoretically make the case, is he competing with himself, why would he do that? He sees that there's opportunity, and that additional traffic will generate more revenue, so. It is a mindset and a theory that's used very often in our field, um, where more businesses clustered together. Actually drives sales and not decrease them.
Yeah, of course, he's got competition coming in from forty-five miles each way.
Sure.
And really coming in from this way, where Winfield is putting in truck stop over there too.
Right.
So you got, and Jasper over there, and then Tupelo out here coming in. To me, though, this is, could, could be the best out here, because you can really have anything otherwise from Tupelo from here.
And I remember when we were in the market, you, you drove us out there and showed us, and obviously you gave us Jim's number, and we kept in constant contact with him. On the property out at the interstate, and, you know, kinda was trying to get a timeline, and then. Realized he was like, well, we wanna do one in town first, and so we, you know, we purchased Mr. Cox's land.
Right.
Um, we had that information for him, and he was able to purchase that, uh, for a good price and go ahead and get that one. Obviously, y'all know they're pouring concrete here soon, probably, if not already, um, and he, he told us that he likes to do a, a nice-looking Chevron with. A, a good buffet in, inside, so you can have a good lunch option, um, we've been in several of his stations up in North Alabama, and. They're good, uh, stations, but obviously, he wants to see how that one does, once it's opened, hopefully in December, but he said. Last time I spoke with him, he's, you know, you know how that goes with construction, that could be January, February, but. Once that's open and go, and he wants to see how it performs, and then hopefully, um, you know, make a move to, to start on the one out at the interstate.
Well, before he gets any tax money or anything, most of them has to be built.
No comment?
That's right, we, we wasn't gonna get caught in building one, then get the other.
His incentive hangs on both of them happening within eighteen months.
Okay.
We're trying to take, take spares out.
If he just builds the one downtown, there won't be any taxes in it, right? So if he goes and helps us get started developing on exit seven, he gets five years' tax gap out there and three years down here.
What kinda deal did y'all structure with him?
It's, it's a fifty, he gets half of the fuel tax and half of the sales revenue from, from the stores.
For how long?
For five years at the interstate, three years down here.
The only reason we gave him the three years down here was to get, see, we didn't have anything on the interstate, and tried and tried and tried. We gave him a good incentive to go out there and build.
Sure.
Out there, that's what we needed, and we had to give him a little something here to get him to do both of them. Of course, he's spending a lot of money too.
One side to the other, one side to the other, neither of them happening, both of them don't get built in eighteen months.
Time passes off in a hurry, then.
Someone, we appreciate y'all coming, we, we normally, we normally, we're work sessions at five, we, uh, we, uh.
Yeah, the other questions I'm sorry.
Took a little more, uh, time to get some detail to today, and thank y'all for taking out time from your schedules to come and visit with us, and.
Sure.
We'll, uh, have our, uh, membership renewal on the agenda for Monday night, we'll let you know the pay to that boat. We've enjoyed doing business with you for a year, and we hope to continue on, but that'll be up to the council, of course.
Absolutely, we appreciate it, thank y'all very much.
Yeah, if any questions come up between now and then, we'd love to answer them, um, again, we're, we're an open book, so please do not hesitate, uh, to ask us anything.
I think that, uh, you know, initially, when we joined your organization, you said. A lot of the groundwork will be laid in the first year, we'll see some fruits maybe in the second year, and I think that you've got some groundwork laid for us, and. Uh, the hundreds of calls that you've built about our areas, I much appreciate it, I may, I appreciate the effort you've made for us.
Right, as you know, it takes time.
We, we hope to see some, some fruits from the work, and, uh, you guys obviously have got a, a good organization together, and. Good personnel, members of the Baptist Church.
Depends on how affiliated with the Baptist Church they are, um, I think as members of the church, it could be a potential conflict, uh, that we'd have. I think that almost knocks out our council, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know, but she.
It'd leave you and Kenneth.
Bill, Kenneth Cochrane, the only two that aren't active members in the Baptist Church.
I don't know if, um, I don't know how your members are structured, if, uh. Members, but I don't know that that necessarily would be a, any kind of conflict, you know, but it may just appear to be a conflict. Does that make any sense?
They brought me a drawing of, of the, the potential plan, this, these being the, the properties of the church. They're the multi-purpose building scheduled to be right in the center of this section of street going east and west, between these. There is a multi-purpose building scheduled to be right in the center of this section of street going east and west, between these two properties. With a mezzanine in here, and a, a big um foyer area that connects everything back to the main church. It'll sit right in the middle of that section of street, so without that street being closed, they can't build this building. And this is the preliminary plan, and uh, so it's not, it's not a maybe so with the church folks, if they use this plan. It's, they'll have to have that uh area between the two properties.
Basically, you're gonna make from the, the high school out to the end of that parking lot.
Yeah, the high school's right here, the church is here, parking lot's here. This little section of street right here is what's gonna be affected. This street will stay open between the old Lawler and Co. building and the other church parking lot, bank building, that'll be open. This will stay open between the city hall and the uh former Harry Green Law office, this is now the counted office. These two streets will stay open, the only, the only part in question is that one little section of street running east and west.
There's not really that much traffic on that, are there? It's got some, I know, but not a, not a whole lot of, uh.
But.
Someone's got to quit the church.
I guess. I guess the, I, my concerns for these people that are active members is whether they, they should even be involved in the vote.
Right, I'll, I'll look into that as far as, you know, I think we got the perception problem, uh, looking like, well, y'all voting for your, your church, if it makes sense. Uh, and be sensible, that may be a problem as far as, I don't know what kind of public outcry we have uh about closing it. I know one time before, when we looked at closing it, there was some opposition, I don't know that opposition would still exist, because now they have a very specific plan. You know, the only times that street's really used is in the morning for the uh preschool, uh, which obviously they, they would have that address somewhere else. Um.
Here, then, here, and here.
All that stays up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that would be, would it become a preschool problem?
So. The church's plan can't go forward unless uh we're able to work with them here, they're gonna have to redesign their thinking and their plan. And, uh, the street was there before the proposed building, but still.
They need that facility to be somewhat cohesive.
Yeah, since, since they've been able to purchase these other properties, um, now they can't really utilize the properties in the ways that would benefit the church without some help here. So I, I just wanted y'all to, before we break up the meeting, I want y'all to be thinking on that, and I need your expertise on whether or not. We can vote without forum, and if we can vote with them without conflict. So that, those are the thoughts I was having on this. And we'll, we'll get to our other things on the agenda uh next, next time maybe, I know we've got a guest coming the twenty-ninth for our work session. I'll, I'll be here, address this on some matters that day. And uh, I've talked to the chief today about our littering problem, again, we're gonna try to uh address that in a different way going forward. We have so far, it's, the problem's getting worse, our street littering, so I wanted to tell you I'm gonna be working on that pretty hard. In the last few days. Um, just appreciate everybody being here today, I'm sorry, we ran over some of those guys.
You finished, Tim?